Are there any corrections to the minutes? None being approved as presented. Public comment, this is a time during the meeting that we have a public comment on any items that are not on the agenda. If you have any items that you wish to bring before the commission, we allow five minutes per member. None being, all right, moving on to item, or consideration of partitions and memorials.
Item 6A, Roger Bradshaw, sole member of Family Ministries, Inc., and pastor of Mount Zion Church of God here, and requests the governing body's consideration and approval of a waiver of the enforcement of the zoning regulations for the city of Garden City, Kansas, that relate to the non-permitted uses on the real property owned by Faith Ministries, Inc. And it's on Roger to come on up and present the item.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have presented a packet to this commission that dated October 21st, and it does have in it some material I'd like to cover, please. There's a letter in this packet dated October 16th, and it tells you about Mount Zion Church of God and Christ. We have been on Main Street there for 10 years. We are adjacent, it's in the packet, October 16th is the letter dated. We have been adjacent to Judd Price and Son, and also to the bank, Jeff Widdow. And in that time, we have never been in conflict with our neighbors. Those neighbors actually let us park in their parking lots when they're not there. This gives service times at the cab service, which is on Sunday from 10:00 to, and then wild study on Tuesday and Thursday. We're requesting this waiver because we have attached a letter the city gave to us from Mr. Jake Cunningham, who is the city attorney, telling us that we had to cease having church services in this location. All at the same time, I might add that this city has allowed, as a pastor, I have health services in the funeral home next door, Judd Price's funeral home, where we had prayer, we had singing, and we had preaching. And I was told by the city commission, I'm sorry, not the commission, but your employees, that Judd is grandfathered, and that the rest of the properties that are churches along Main Street, other than 702, 702 however, has been there for 15 years, when you change the ordinance, and now as this state has been there 17 years, they receive the same correspondence I'm getting, that you need to vacate the property and cease closing church services as well as ourselves. So, we're asking for a waiver, because I want to go back to page one. On October 21st, this city commission, April, approximately April 2012, passed an ordinance admitting the comprehensive plan of Garden City rezoning the property at 704 North Main from commercial potential to residential potential. They repealed the citywide land use diagram and all code ordinances of the city of Garden City. They then, on the same date, October 3rd, 2012, passed a ordinance approving the rezoning of 704 North Main property from C2 business district, commercial district, to R3 residential, multifamily residential district. They amended the zoning ordinance and a district zoning map of the city, and repealed the current zoning ordinance and the district zoning map, all the code ordinances of the city of Garden City. At the same time, they passed a resolution for a waiver request for the parking lot, lot size, lot coverage for CCS properties. For Candace, and I don't know if I've got the proper pronunciation on this, but Damaro, she, you can find this information in the attached agenda I gave you in your packet. Now, when Candace purchased this property at 704 North Main, which was approximately the same date back in '12, she requested of these changes in zoning and waivers, and was approved by this body. She knew a church existed and had been existing at 702 North Main for 15 years. This was not new business. She, we had been there, holding service at 606 North Main without complaint, I might add, and for eight years. Neither church, as far as I'm aware, had received any notices that they were out of compliance, that they were having any zoning issues for this entire time until Candace filed a complaint with this city and requested that this church that's next to her property not be allowed to hold services in the C2 district. Now, in talking to your staff, we were told that the zoning process is complaint-driven. So, since we did not have any complaints for all the years that we were holding church there, once you had a complaint, the city had no choice, I guess I'll say, but to move forward on that complaint, which means, according to your zoning laws, that our church and the church at 702 is out of compliance. Now, Candace was out of compliance when she purchased that property, and the city did something to fix that. And in your staff's terminology, they created a sawtooth where they allow, when you look at the zoning map, there's a "two" sticking down on that map that allows her to have a residential property and a business district. So, as part of our process here today, we are asking for the waiver, but if the city doesn't decide that they do not want to do the waiver, then we're asking for the same, I guess I'd say, consideration that you'd already given to the lady who owns CCS property, to allow us to be rezoned to CO, which does allow for churches. Churches are allowed in a CO district. Now, in closing, I have seen our United States move to taking prayer at schools. I have seen them taking garbage trust off of our currency, and I never thought, at 59 years old, because my grandfather was a circuit preacher, he came into Garden City and preached at many churches here. I was coming into Garden City when Mary Street was dirt. I never thought, in rural America, that this body would be moving to tell churches to get off of Main Street, and that is why I'm here today. Churches have a right to be on Main Street. We have not been causing problems to anyone. Our neighbors have not created any problems for anyone. Our neighbors are not here complaining to this commission. The person who is complaining is a person who bought a property next to a church and then did not like, according to what I'm being told, how loud they played their music, and so they filed this complaint. So, I'm asking this commission, since you opened the door back in '12, to allow Candace to purchase her property, rework it, put a residential area in there, I'm asking for the same consideration. I'm saying, you opened the door, you have the power to close the door, you have the power to stop a complaint process that is aggressive, and arbitrary, and unfeeling to people who were there before Candace ever showed up on that property. And I thank you for your time. You have questions for me?
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Caleb, can you kind of give us kind of the memo of what you provided, please?
Yes, you have a memo in your packet that's in regards to the request for waiver for zoning use violation at 606 North Main Street. This consideration, to give you a little bit of background on that, is that the city had received complaints regarding the use of 606 North Main Street as a church or other area of worship that was confirmed that the Mount Zion Church was holding services and in place to sign without a permit. The property is currently Zoned C3, Central Business District, and precludes the use of property as a church or other area of worship. And it's intended that that zoning hasn't been in place in the C3 district since the mid-'60s in the city of Garden City. At no time prior to 2014 had Mr. Bradshaw, to our knowledge, asked if a church was permitted to use in the C3 zoning district. Mr. Bradshaw was notified of the violation with a letter dated March 11th of 2014. Mr. Bradshaw came in on March 13th, 2014, and explained the building is being used as offices, and the church rents out the spaces for three hours a week. Staff reviewed the zoning regulations within regarding disallowance of churches or other places of worship within the C3 zoning district. On May 16th, 2014, a second violation letter was sent. Staff had not been contacted further by Mr. Bradshaw. The violation was then sent to the city attorney on June 17th, 2014. A letter was sent on July 21st, 2014, from the assistant city attorney, giving 90 days to cease the violation. Mr. Bradshaw had correspondence with assistant city attorney on September 2nd, 2014, regarding the violation. And on September 29th, 2014, the assistant city attorney sent another letter, following up with Mr. Bradshaw, extending the timeframe an additional 60 days from the date of the letter. Mr. Bradshaw has been in contact with staff several times since the September 29th letter. Staff did not discuss further options with Mr. Bradshaw due to the perceived threats and actions he made in regards to his zoning violation situation. He was referenced to direct his correspondence from that point to the city attorney, who had been handling the violations since June 17th, 2014. In a meeting held on October 16th, 2014, Mr. Bradshaw requested a waiver from the enforcement of the zoning regulations. Such a waiver is not provided for in the zoning regulations, and thereby is not an option planning staff would offer or recommend. A waiver of this nature triggers due process and notice requirements for surrounding landowners. As this is a legal issue, I would direct your questions for further clarification regarding the use of waivers and land use issues to the city attorney. Amending the zoning regulations or rezoning the property also would be very difficult based on the regulations and location of the property. If the property were to be rezoned, the city would be creating a non-deforming use, would not be able to meet the current zoning regulation requirements, thus potentially impacting property values and the use of other landowners' properties, which then may become a hardship for them. In addition, amending the zoning regulations to allow churches would not be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan or downtown master plan, which were put together by the citizens of the community, recommended by the planning commission, and approved by the governing body within the last year. Some important zoning information in regards to this request. The following zoning districts allow for churches or similar places of worship as follows. It is a by right use in the A district, the CO district, the C1 district, and the RC districts. It is permitted with a zoning use permit in the R3, R2, and R1 districts. C3 Central Business District is a unique zoning district that is intended for the downtown area of the city, providing a concentrated retail, commercial, and service uses that are intended to serve the needs of the local trade area. The Garden City zoning regulations have prohibited churches in the C3 district since 1968. One zoning reason for prohibiting a church in a commercial retail setting is the compatibility of uses. For example, a local and state liquor license prohibit the issuance of liquor licenses within 200 feet of churches and schools. This is a reason that schools are also commonly prohibited in commercial and retail zoning districts. Garden City amendment evaluation criteria for zoning amendments require the following according to Article 27.040 of the Garden City zoning regulations, which states, prior to taking any action on a request for an amendment which is not a general revision to the zoning regulations and which will affect specific property, the planning commission shall give consideration of the following evaluation criteria. First, the physical character of the neighborhood surrounding the property under consideration; the existence of the existing zoning and land uses of properties both adjacent and near the property under consideration; the suitability under existing conditions of the subject property for the land uses to which it has been zoned; the extent to which removal or alteration of the existing zoning classification will affect nearby properties; the length of time subject properties have remained vacant, have zoned, if applicable; the relative gain to the public health, safety, and welfare by the change of value of the landowner's property compared to any hardship that may be imposed upon a landowner; and the consideration of recommendations of permanent or professional staff if applicable. Also, the conformance of the proposed zoning change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan being utilized by the city of Garden City, Kansas, and other factors relevant or specific to a particular proposed zoning amendment. Zoning regulations and procedures are designed to provide due process that helps protect the city and the landowner. Zoning groups compatible uses in the same area. It assists in maintaining property values by disallowing certain uses within a given area. And zoning takes into consideration traffic uses, property utilities, fire protection, and other necessary city services when determining land availability. Most zoning regulations take some time and thought in preparing and are adopted by the governing body. Most zoning regulations provide for appeals and variances, giving due process to the landowner and surrounding landowners through the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Board of Zoning Appeals can only give variances to issues or uses that are given specific authority for in the zoning regulations. A waiver, unlike a zoning amendment, appeal, or variance, does not provide due process to surrounding landowners because adjacent landowners are not notified of the waiver requests. Your alternatives are to approve the waiver exempting 606 North Main from enforcement of the zoning regulations, or denying the approval of the waiver exempting 606 North Main from enforcement of the zoning regulations, and staff would carry on with the enforcement. Staff is unable to recommend alternative number one, and recommends alternative number two, which would be, as outlined in the staff report, denying the approval of the waiver.
Does commissioners have any questions for Caleb?
Caleb, can you address the waiver that was granted to CCS Properties LLC and the waiver being requested by Mr. Bradshaw? The difference in those requests?
Well, actually, the request from the other property was actually of the rezoning process, and the waiver that was requested for was for the parking element of that rezoning request.
So, it was not for an allowance of a non-permitted use?
Correct.
Which is more substantial. When you look at the overall zoning of the city, then, a change in a parking lot size or a fence height or something like that?
Correct.
Not to think too many plays ahead necessarily, but in discussions with Mr. Bradshaw, I think there's a desire to, if this waiver, as presented, was not approved, to proceed through a zoning request. At least he's interested in keeping that option available. And so, our enforcement would allow for time sufficient to do that. A similar waiver to the same, the same waiver to the same requirement would be required if the property were to be rezoned. And again, that's starting to play out all the different options that could happen, but just as a comparison, there's a parking requirement for CO as well.
Correct.
Anything else for Caleb?
See, Mr. Cunningham is here, and if you have any questions of him, since he's been handling this matter, sir, you can ask him. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to address those for you.
I don't have any questions. I just, I was going to point out also the difference in the zoning waivers and how they were different, and so I'm glad you guys already covered that because the other property rezoned their property, and then they needed a little help, and that's not the same as asking for a complete waiver to zoning law, long time zoning laws, you know. So, with a process in place that allows, you know, this to be considered by the community, I would favor that process. Actually, I don't know that I would grant a waiver really, because it's, you know, there's some legality issues there, and, but, because there is a process that can be employed here, I think that's the way to go about it.
Could you explain to us the legal aspect of his request?
Well, he's asking the governing body to waive your enforcement of zoning regulations, in particular, this property is Zoned C3, which does not allow for the use as a church. I would suggest to the governing body, as Commissioner Law just alluded to, that to bypass the zoning regulations that are in place would be to exercise a power that this governing body does not have. You have adopted zoning regulations, and once you've adopted those zoning regulations as a governing body, you are expected to enforce those same regulations. And as Caleb Kenner alluded to, and again, Commissioner Law alluded to, in the prior example with Ms. Camino's property, she went through a rezoning process and followed those regulations. So, it is my recommendation to the governing body, if you choose to not pass the waiver or to deny the waiver, that you inform the property owner that the proper way to handle this is to go through a request for a rezoning of the property, and then that process will be allowed to play itself out, which includes, among other things, notice requirements to other adjacent property owners and the community at large, which, when you talk about property rights, is a very important consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I might note something. Mr. Bradshaw's letter of October 16th, I believe, was the date to the commission requesting a waiver. He addresses solely his property at 606 North Main. In his memorandum of today's date, he requests a waiver on behalf of 702 North Main. It'd be my position that Mr. Bradshaw does not have standing to ask for a waiver or any change with respect to that property, since he does not own it. So, I assume he maybe just included that in as an additional argument, since it's the same type of use, but certainly, any action you take has no bearing whatsoever on 702 North Main.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment? Thank you, Jake. Anybody else want to comment? Yes, please come forward and state your name.
Hello. Hi, guys. I'm Candace Camino. I did, we do have an LLC that purchased 704 North Main. I've known these people for many, many years. This is not personal, this is business. I would probably be reiterating many things that Caleb has already stated, but this is not zoned. I'm worried about this setting of precedence, concerned about restricting other businesses from moving into the area. We, Garden City, are wanting to be the retail hub of southwest Kansas and Wood. This could possibly curtail certain businesses from opening, such as a restaurant serving alcohol, which that was recovered, recovered already. There is a separation of church and state, and by allowing them to remain, the city is implying that maybe churches are special. The church is a nuisance itself. It's not a good neighbor. Cigarette butts are all over, they're hanging out at Western State Bank parking lot. There are tarps on the windows with holes in them. They bring nothing to the value of downtown Garden City. They don't fit the vision that the city has for downtown. We want people to shop downtown, and allow something like this to be present there. Their presence hurts the downtown image. We are trying to draw people downtown and keep it alive. Yes, we did request many, we went through the planning commission, we went through the proper procedures to attain our property. Sometimes we felt like it was all sorts of dog jumping through hoops, but it all worked out, and everybody was happy. If you grant this church to remain, then the church at 702 North Main would be allowed, and then church at 702 is even a bigger nuisance to the city and downtown and surrounding neighbors. As police have been called 14 times for noise, there are boards on the windows, et cetera. You know, I want the commission to consider the properties on Mary Street that are not, were not zoned. We've gone through all that, through the months here. Please consider those things. But we want you to do the right thing, and continue to clean up Main Street, and not just the part that you see, but all parts. There's other places to rent, like, oh, there was a church across from Old Sabine Hall on Buffalo Jones and, there's other places they could go. It's not that this is the only place they have to go. I want to thank you for your time, and thank you for being Garden City, you for what we do, Shoalman Crossing.
Thank you. Is there, yes, please step forward and state your names.
My name is Caroline Bradshaw, and I'm Roger Bradshaw's wife. I also go own the property at 606 North Main. Candace and I have known each other for a long time, and I've dealt very fairly, we dealt very fairly with each other, so this isn't personal, but it just became personal because churches aren't nuisances, and churches have tremendous value to this community. And some of the people who attend the church there are people who are disabled, people who can't get, one of the persons is a veteran who's been to three tours of Iraq. He's served his country well, and he attends church there. And there are people with disabilities, in and out of wheelchairs that come in. Are they nuisance to, there are people who, we provide services to, who are frail and elderly, and they come there. Are they nuisances to? We're not a nuisance in any way whatsoever, and to call it a church a nuisance is to me, at best, the biggest insult to me, which you could do to a church, because we are not a nuisance. If the downtown district is for retail, residential and retail are not the same thing, you wouldn't, I don't have a store next to my home. It's not retail. That's a residential. And apartments are residential, where people live, that's not retail. And I know they've cohabitated for a long time, where people live, where people shop. That's okay. People also have churches where people shop, but where people live. It's called a community, and that's what we're part of. We're part of a community, and that's what we represent, and we represent many different things, and there is a tarp on the window, and it's to keep the heat out. We operate on a budget. We're very, very constrained with our budget, you know? It's not to offend anybody, I promise you. If you ask us to replace it, we'll replace it. If you ask us to paint it, we'll paint it. If you find that we're a nuisance in that eyesore. I think Candace done a great thing with her property, I did do that property too, myself, looked at different ideas too, and I think she's done a great work, and I wouldn't speak against her work, but I would ask her not to speak against our work too. It might not be to her standard, but we're not by any means a nuisance, we're not by any means a offense, maybe to her, but that's her personal opinion. But we've offered so much to the community, and people come in for help to our church. People come in because we are on Main Street, they find us easily because across the street's a correction center, and they say, we saw that you were a church over here, can you help us? Is there anything you can do for us? So, because where we're located, we do draw in people that wouldn't otherwise know where we're at, you know? And people ask us to put up a sign because they said, we don't know where you guys are at, we can't find you, would you please put up a sign so we can find you? So, those things I just take into consideration. We are part of a community, and we offer benefit to the community, not everybody, but we are not, I pray that you would not find us a nuisance.
What other services do you do there besides church?
We have a home health agency. We provide services to frail and elderly to keep them in their home from going into a nursing home. We have staff there that, the CNAs, and training for the CNAs to provide in-home supports. We provide supports for disabled persons in their homes, and we provide, again, one of the people that's there, he's been a three-tour veteran, and he would be in a nursing home if he were not in our services, and he comes there every day, and he gets, he's on a, like, a physical therapy, like a standing table that the state hasn't, that allows him to come and do exercises, regimens, stuff like that, that, otherwise, he would be in a nursing home, a facility, a 31-year-old man in a nursing home, you know, and his family says he would be already dead because he would have given up, and he wouldn't have, but we brought him to Garden City, he actually wasn't, just brought him to Garden City where he could be part of the community. He goes to the football games, he goes to basketball games, he goes everywhere in the community. He's part of the community, and that church is part of his community too, and the services he gets there at that 606 North Main is part of his community. So, we offer a lot to a lot of people, so please, I pray that you would not find us a nuisance.
So, is those services you provide to that veteran, is that through Family Ministries, your business, or through Mount Zion?
It's both. We, I know it's kind of a merged thing with, a lot of people who go to We, we, I know it's kind of a merged thing with, a lot of people who go to family ministry, or get services at family ministries. Also, the church helps provide supports to, because we know the need, the needs of the people, that they, a lot of times, they're on Medicaid, they don't have fundings, so we ask the church to help fund them, or to help with the services that they need, to help them with whatever they need in the community, to help them maintain a lot of needs, like clothing, food, all that kind of things like that. So we work in conjunction with each other, so we're kind of like a multifaceted facility.
Okay.
Well, the family, my understanding is the family ministries, your nonprofit business, is zoned correctly for where it's located. It's just the church part that is not compliant.
Right, and when the church was there, we were never apprised or notified that it was not allowed there. And we've been, honestly, we did not know that. It was, whereas we would have rezoned then, we would have asked then, and because that's only reasonable. But to come on the form of a complaint, that makes us look like we're negligent and trying to disregard the laws, but we had knowledge base of that, and I do apologize for that.
That's just how the system is set up, and that's what we're trying to do.
Right, and I understand that, and that's why we would request the condition, you know, just like, we want to operate within everything that's right and do right, but, you know, our, what we offer to the community isn't, I don't believe in any way, shape, or form a nuisance, and I believe we do offer benefit to the community. So I just pray that you would just allow us to continue to do your work.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, the issue of whether this use is a nuisance is not before this governing body.
Right.
It was probably a poorly chosen word, so.
Sure.
Mrs. Bradshaw, they will not be considering whether or not it depends that your location is a nuisance or otherwise.
Thank you.
That's not before the governing body.
Anybody else would like to comment on this? Yes, sir. Just please state your name for the public record.
John Corino. I just want to reiterate one thing here, I believe it is C3, is that correct? That is the zoning in question. As Ms. Bradshaw already stated, that not only do they offer a church service with other, a lot of other benefits to the community, I also want to bring attention that C3 zoning also includes auditoriums, office spaces, and theaters, which, if the church is, is a subsidiary of everything else they do, it kind of falls into that same category, wouldn't you agree? And I believe that, that this man sitting here today is really trying to benefit the community. And this isn't the first time we've had zoning issues. I would also implore for the council to consider perhaps maybe taking a look at our zoning regulations as far as they consider churches. Perhaps there is more room in our community to, to provide spaces for churches to minister and to help our community, instead of having to come through and go through all these legalities and, and everything else. Maybe, maybe we as a community could be a little bit more friendly. Maybe there's something we can do, perhaps not a waiver, perhaps maybe, maybe changing some of our zoning regulations.
Which is what's been suggested.
But also, I want to bring to attention that I don't believe that the city of Garden City has a business license as well, is that correct? We don't, we don't require a business license? So also, in defense of Reverend Bradshaw, without him knowing what was available at the time of him coming into, to a business to, to perform his ministries of various types, I guess the question would be then, how would he know whether or not he was in violation? How many years has he been there, sir?
Ten.
Ten years. And you've been here?
Two.
Two.
Wow.
Well, anyway. But without, without having some kind of basis, I guess I just want to say on behalf of the community, and hopefully on behalf of Mr. Bradshaw here, that how would he know he was in violation and spend the last 10 years doing ministry out of a location for us now to say, oh, timeout and change? So I would just, on behalf of him, I just want to say, I would hope that you would see in his favor and at least consider possibilities of what we can do to keep the Bradshaws in ministry and keep the ministry doors open in Garden City.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi.
Hello, please state your name.
I'm calling this downtown mission. My board of directors met last night about this very issue. It is their stance at this time that considering the amount of work that has went into the downtown master plan, that they hope that there is a compromise for the situation, but that their stance is to support the current zoning regulations of the C3 district. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
I'm Debbie Horton, and I'd just like to ask Mr. Bradshaw, who pays the property taxes at that property?
Family Ministries.
Family Ministries is the one paying the property taxes? So at that point, is it classified as a church or not? That's the all, all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you. I'm not sure on that.
Property taxes, it's a church.
Yeah, it's, we're really dealing with a zoning issue on this. Anybody else?
Ellen, but it doesn't own the building. I mean, I mean, Mount Zion doesn't own the building. The church doesn't own the building. The church just uses it.
Well, we're talking about the property at 606 North Main. Okay, anybody else? What would the commission like to do at this point? I think, I think there is a process in place where, you know, they can go through the zoning, the zoning board and get it changed, and I think, waiving, waiving it sets a precedent that, kind of what Mr. Cunningham said, that probably isn't the most favorable way to do. We've got a system set in place, so. I think, go ahead.
I agree with you. I think that they need to go through that zoning process and see how that plays out, but we as commissioners, I think we only have one avenue we can take here, and that is to maintain the C3 central business, business district downtown. If we start changing it, then it's going to look like a big quilt with a lot of patches in it and variations. So I'm going to make a motion that we deny the approval of the waiver exempting 608 North Main from enforcement of the zoning regulations.
606.
606, okay, and zoning regulations staff would carry out the enforcement.
There's a motion. Do we really need to make a motion on this?
Okay.
There is a motion on the floor to.
Be some finality to it.
Okay, there's a motion to deny the approval of the waiver exempting 606 North Main from enforcement of the zoning regulations, and staff would carry on with the enforcement. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
There's a second? Any other discussion on this?
I would, I would stop short of them moving on with enforcement, because they have asked for, or some people have asked for the opportunity for them to rezone. I mean, I got a couple options in my eyes. Add, add some use that fits them into C3 or rezone to another zoning. I mean, there's, there's more than even one option there, so I would like to provide them that option, and I'm guessing Commissioner Dale didn't mean to deny him that option in his motion, but.
I'm not going to deny him the option. I'm not going to deny him the opportunity to resist there and get a waiver to do so.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to necessarily interject discussion other than the Commissioner Law brought up. I want to make sure the commission's clear. Family Ministries, Inc. is not in violation of the zoning. The Sunday use, or the, the church service use is the non-conforming use. Family Ministries, Inc. is.
Remain.
Is in conformance with C3 zoning, and I don't know that there's any of us that, that question whether it is, or question whether or not there even exists the opportunity to consider it out of compliance. So it's, it's merely, it's merely the Mount Zion Church.
I just wanted to touch briefly on the improvement that you were discussing, and I think as Brandy somewhat alluded to in the first onset discussion, we have every intention of working with Mr. Bradshaw and Family Ministries, Inc., and providing them ample opportunity should they choose to go through the rezoning application process. So I just wanted to clarify that for Commissioner Law, that is all.
Thank you. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Pass. Thank you. Moving on to.
Item 7A, the city of Garden City has completed their general obligation bond issue, and the funds are available, or were available, in the count on October 15th. Item B, the safety committee has chosen Joe Campos, warehouse clerk in the electric department, as the third quarter 2014 safety recognition winner, and Joe is here, and Michelle's going to give you an overview of, of Joe and his accomplishments.
Mayor and Commissioners, Joe was selected for his safe work practices, his being proactive with shop housekeeping and inspections, and in the memo, we have a couple of pictures to show you Joe in action and the shop. And he is a warehouse clerk for the light service center, and he is here along with a lot of the department employees. We'll have Joe come on up.
I want to get a picture of you, so, come on.
On the other side. Face us, Joe.
Face, face the, face the rear. Here you go. Good? Good? All right. I'd like to congratulate Joe. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
That's a rather.
That's a bunch of bedding planners.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, he's such a good guy. Very well received over there, you can tell.
Yes. He looks like he does a good job from the photos, too, you know?
Absolutely, probably the cleanest building in the city.
If you've ever been there, it's clean.
It is clean, definitely. Okay. Moving on.
Mayor and Commissioners, two weeks ago yesterday, the city municipal court at, at the consideration and advice of Garden City Police Department, and in determination by me and my authorities with respect to the safety of the buildings, placed into effect a, a screening of municipal court attendees, and it was relatively short notice decision, and we had a game plan for Monday morning two weeks ago, and agreed to, after that Monday, reevaluate for Wednesday, and following Wednesday, reevaluate for the next day, and then so on and so forth. We do believe that after a couple of weeks, we have a good handle for how we can better ensure the safety of the court, not just its employees, but also the attendees, the general public. The, do you have a representative from Garden City Police Department to answer any questions you might have? Probably will stay away from the specifics of a, of a threat. I don't know that it would be appropriate to, to speak in detail about that.
Sorry, is that me?
Yeah.
I think that's a very, I think that's the reason that we are here, is because we need to know.
One, one minute. Just state your name for the public record.
Sorry. My name is Heloia Gallos. I believe that knowing what the threat is, is the very reason why we are doing this. Not only as a local attorney, but also as the president of the local LUDAC chapter, I find it, or we should all find that this is very intrusive. I say this because there already is a large gap between individuals who do call the police and people who don't call the police. I'm not saying that this is a bad thing. What I'm trying to say is that there's less intrusive ways to go about this. If I'm going to be going to court and getting, you know, more than just a little carry frisk, then to me, that's more intrusive. If you go to any other court, even Topeka or Wichita, they have metal detectors. They're not over there touching me everywhere. They are just wanting me making sure I don't have any weapons, et cetera. Now, the current method, the method in which I, I was going to go to the city court, but chose not to enter, is, I find it very intrusive. Now, once again.
And what method is that?
The method of totally just touching me everywhere. I mean, I find that the police officers like it more than I.
And it's your understanding that that's the method being used?
That, that is the method being used.
It is not the method being used.
I've seen it.
The first day, when we did not have the material available, or the equipment available to us, the searches were pat downs. Following the first day, the pat downs were never used again unless a detector went off, which is consistent with any wand or metal detector process in America, or anywhere else for that matter.
Or what I'm trying to get to is this.
Well, your information's wrong is what I'm trying to get to, and so they are using the wand, the less intrusive.
The moment I was there, this is what happened. That's what I'm trying to say. What I'm, the reason why I decided to come is not necessarily because of the method, but, or actually, it is the method. The reason is that if we start wanding and prisking every single individual that walks into that courtroom, whether they're defendants, victims, witnesses, et cetera, then there's going to be a bigger divide between individuals who call, call the police whenever they need them, and people who don't call the police whenever they need them. That's the reason I, I decided.
Well, I mean, we live in a changing and ever-evolving society. I mean, you have to walk through metal detectors, you get patted down trying to get onto an airplane in this day and age. I think that what the city manager has implemented is a policy or a procedure for the court to provide a level of security for the courtroom to ensure that everybody is in a safe environment. So, and I think Officer, or Officer Pruitt, or Captain Pruitt could kind of expound and give us a little more information on, on kind of where they're at as well, and the whole procedure.
I understand, and I just wanted to make it aware to you all that there is a possibility that this may affect things down the road, and possibly maybe affect the, the police department in doing their job.
Okay.
And that's why.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
Captain Pruitt? I'll kind of go over, try to, I'll try to keep it short, Reader's Digest version. We did have credible threats towards the judge and, and the municipal court prosecutor, and that's what we were actioning. Like the gentleman said, the first day, and like city manager said, we didn't have material that, available. We didn't have metal detectors, we didn't have the wands. The next day, we implemented that. Like the city manager said, if the metal detectors went off, we then utilized the pat down search. We've changed that. We've also implemented the possibility of having a walkthrough metal detector, so we're not just using wands as well, but we're still improving the process as we go along. I can't speak to the legality of it, but the legal research was done before we even implemented this. It definitely was not a knee-jerk reaction. We did our, we did our homework to make sure that we were legal in doing it, and it was definitely in response to credible threats that we've received, we've received as a police department, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're responding to recently changing state laws that say we either have to provide a certain level of security, or we have to allow concealed carry.
Right.
And so that changes the game a lot, and while we might all agree with Mr. Gallos to a certain extent, you know, that we still either. either have to allow the court to be open, or we have to provide the security level necessary to post it and enforce that, no carry, concealed carry. And so, are we getting exactly right right now? Maybe not. But as they've stated, you know, it's changed at least once or twice since it was implemented. I'm sure it will continue to change as we, you know, work through it, but...
And we've invited feedback on how to improve that process, both from an invasiveness standpoint, but a speed standpoint, and an equity standpoint, which I do think is a good point. You know, we've subjected our own employees to, I mean, there's, if you're going into the courtroom, there's going to be some, well, not some, the same security process taken. And the decision, I think the most compelling or convincing part of this for me was, we have resources allocated throughout the community during the day. And our intent is to put those resources where they are most needed. So if this meets the threshold of this is where those resources can be best used in the community during that period of the day, and that is the judgment recommendation of the police department, that's compelling enough for me to make an operational change to put the security measures in place. Now, one of the benefits of it, we didn't know we had a surplus screening machine at the airport. And so, our, the world became a lot easier once we found that out. And so, we're in the process of figuring out how that gets, that works. It's, you know, not, it's a little bit more complicated than just, you know, rolling it out there, plugging it in, and telling people to walk through it. So, we feel that weathering the first day, or even the second day, allowed us to figure out a better way to do it. And, most importantly, we're not talking about an incident that happened at municipal court. And I think in competing values, certainly into, you know, invasion of one's personal space, and convenience, and speed, and all those things are important. In this instance, those lost out to another priority value, and that was the safety of the people involved. Not just the alleged targets of the threat, but also the other folks in the courtroom as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 70, the city has received correspondence from Cox regarding lineup changes. There's a series of, there's a series of staff reports available to you. If you've got any questions, we'll try to answer them off the staff reports.
Commissioners have any questions on the staff reports? See, employment's keep doing well at the airport, so hopefully we'll have another, it looks like we'll have another rubber gear, so we keep on our track, so. Meetings a note?
Meetings of note are included. For your review, if there's events that require RSVP, please do so through the city clerk. With that, I think we're ready for item 8A, which is the appropriation ordinance.
I'll make the motion to approve appropriation ordinance 2374-2014A.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion. Commissioner Dale's seconded. Is there any discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Pass.
Item 9A, which if approved, would be resolution number?
2607?
Removes tree nuisances from 205 South Fourth Street and 207 North Second Street.
I have a motion on the resolution.
I move we approve resolution 2607-2014.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion on that? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Pass.
Item 10A, Mark Pamplin is present to present the governing body an update on fundraising for the State Theater Project. Mark?
Good afternoon, folks. How are you?
Good.
Good. Thank you again for having me back. I was really hoping that big crowd would stay. I like big crowds, so. What I'm dropping off to you, if you have all received one of these, you can kind of follow along with me. I'll try to keep this very brief. It's only four pages long. What, well, I mean, there's not much on this four page.
Yeah.
But what I'm here, oh, by the way, Mark Pamplin with the State Theater Project. What I'm going to give you now is the last four months that we've been doing with the State Theater in producing our shows and getting our theater off the ground. Not really much of going out and getting investors and fundraisers. We're trying to put the product out there so people know what they are going to be getting. So that's where I'm coming to you from this. But a note, I wanted to say that we did The Odd Couple as our first show, our kickoff show that we did in July and the beginning of August. The show was very well received in the public. I don't know if you saw it, saw it, anybody? Anybody?
You liked Couple? It was great.
Thank you very much. Thank you, man. I have three more of Catch Me If You Can this weekend. And I know it's Royals weekend, but just think about that. I schedule a show when they're eight games down. So, who knew? Okay. But what I wanted to tell you is here on The Odd Couple, what we did was, I gave out a survey to people to fill out, kind of the questions that people have been asking me and the city have been asking me. We had 139 surveys returned out of 573 people that attended. The surveys were per party, not per person. Of the 34 surveys that came in, 34 said that they had come from outside of Garden City to see the show. 62 of the surveys had dinner before the show, and from what we added up was $2,744.38 spent in restaurants before they got to the theater. And some people just put a lot, so it was even more than that. And Kim, I brought this to Kim's attention from tour and convention, and she said those numbers were probably pretty low, and I probably low-balled it, but it was probably a little bit more when you work in, maybe getting gasoline or things like that. 10 restaurants were visited, Applebee's, or, I'm sorry, 10 of the responses were going to visit restaurants and bars after the show. 23 local restaurants were patronized. Applebee's led the way with 15, but we made a deal with Applebee's that when we sent out our card for The Odd Couple, they put a discount coupon on there, and they paid for that. So that helped us out a great deal. And then you see Old Chicago and Las Maggie's. Surprisingly, Arby's had four. I just found that very interesting, that people went to Arby's before the show. So, but 23 restaurants. The number one thing that people did before and after the show was go shopping. Be it on Main Street, Walmart was in there, even sometimes just going grocery shopping late at night after the show. So that wasn't really surprising. For some reason, I thought going out and doing things afterwards. Our attendance for Odd Couple, we had 573 totals for 10 shows. The one remarkable stat that I find here, and that I was really proud of, was the last six shows, the show after it outnumbered the show before it, for the last six. And we ended up topping out with 115 for the very last show. The total spend on the production was $4,323, which we raised in, I have to say, three weeks. And I was impressed that we were able to raise that much money. The total made by the production was $5,890. Also, we did this as a benefit for the Garden City Humane Society, Finney County Humane Society, where I asked people to bring pet food, cat food, dog food, toys, and things like that. We were very close to 600 pounds of dog food and cat food for the Humane Society. I know we probably went over 600 pounds, but I stopped counting when I was loading it into my car, because it was all very heavy. But they said that that would last them about three months. And they were very gracious for it. They didn't ask us to do it. In fact, when I went to go tell them about it, they looked at me like I was an alien. And I said, "Well, if you don't want me to do it, I'm going to do it anyway, and I'll just bring it to you." So, but we ended up getting a nice write-up in the paper about that. Thank you, Scott. So, if you turn the page, we are working on a play called Catch Me If You Can. It is comedy mystery. It is perfect for the Halloween season, and I believe, Kelly, you've seen it? What'd you think? Be audible. Be audible. Two thumbs up. Thank you very much. So, we have three more performances this weekend, guys. So, it is, it is an outstanding show. If there's one thing I'm very proud of, it's that these two shows were outstanding, if I do say so myself. But we had no complaints, no negative feedback. In fact, Saturday night, we had five people from Delaware that found the postcard at the sleep-in, bought tickets to the art center, and they were absolutely blown away that we were having anything like this here. So, plus, you'll never guess the entry. So, the reason I don't have attendance and things in a survey there is, I'm in the show, and I'm not doing the door, and the person who is taking the cash was not handing out the surveys. I will not mention her name, but I call her mom, so. But right now, we're at 219 for the performances. Once again, the second week has outnumbered the first week, and we had four shows on the first week compared to three. The total spend on the production was $2,856. Why so cheap was because the materials that we used for this show, we recycled from the last show. And that is the way that we're, let's say, buddy. In fact, I think we only spent about $400 compared to $900. Just more than that. But we have between $900 and $1,200 on materials. We did a lot less than that for this one. And so far, counting concessions, we've made $1,738. We are doing a toy drive for the Salvation Army, and that, we're going to donate the toys the week after the show. So far, we have 56 toys that have been brought to the theater. I'd like to note that one of the reasons of how I'm trying to facilitate and get people into the theater is group fundraisers. The only one that has done it so far, and they did it for Odd Couple, and they've done it for this one, is St. Dominic's Church. They are selling tickets for $15 apiece, which they only owe me $5 out of every ticket. They keep 10. And the last I checked, they were at $700, and they're raising money for their youth ministry. So, and they're, they're still going. We've gotten a lot back. The public response on the third page, again, it has been overwhelmingly positive. The shows have looked terrific. The sets have been professional. The acting has been fantastic, and not to say just because I'm in the show, but Odd Couple was terrific. Same with Catch Me If You Can. We're getting audible responses on the ending, which, when you come to see it, you'll learn But the one thing that Odd Couple did was it did open some doors for us. I started getting phone calls, one from Kim, from Convention and Tourism, and I didn't know what she wanted to meet with, but when we sat down, she said, "How can we help?" And when she looked at the theater, she said, "What do you need?" And I said, "Well, we had 100 debris night for The Odd Couple." And, by the way, nobody left, just to say. And I said, "We could use an air conditioner. I need the marquee fixed. I need, I got some plumbing issues." The plumbing issues that we had, we took care of personally. Only cost me 45 bucks, so it was okay. I'd like, again, get the marquee fixed, and maybe just some other minor improvements, and things like that. But I'm eligible for grants to do that throughout the city. So, again, not costing the city anything. Also, they would like to advertise the theater all over southwest Kansas. When we first announced this a year and a half ago, Larry Johnson called me in, and he said this is something that he would like to advertise to all 50 states, which is all the tour groups that drive through Garden City. Now, we're opening up our shopping, and the water park is coming, and things like that. This is, in the long term, when it is done, the uniqueness of this theater being in the round will get people to stop. They can see a show, they can shop, and see the things that we have, plus, it'll fill hotel rooms. I'm trying to convince Sammy of that, so, right now. So, the one thing with the sponsors, we added two new sponsors for Catch Me If You Can. Two sponsors called me. One was Burgess Motors, and the other was Garden City State Bank, and wanted to make sure that they were part of this, because when they got this in the mail, they were like, "We want to be part of that." Also, the Finney County Young Professionals have also volunteered to help with any minor remodeling that we might be able to do, whether you would like us to do that or not. But they were talking about taking the wallpaper off the wall, and maybe putting some paint and painting inside, and things like that. So, just cosmetic things. We're not doing anything like that. So, again, on the, for next year, and this is what I'm asking, we haven't planned a Christmas show, because we were only allowed to do it right up to this point, was to get our October show in. But next year, we would like to do a full season of plays, starting in February, running through, three weeks in February, and in May, August, October, and then do a Christmas show in December. We'd also like to take the next couple of months to find at least 100 sponsors and seek grants to fund the shows, because I would very much like to be able to sell tickets online on our website. I would like to eventually open a central ticketing office, so people could just call it. When they get the cards in the mail, they can just call and make a reservation instead of having to go all over town. We, like I said, we'd like to get the heating and the plumbing and the marquee and things in a working order, so it's comfortable for our guests. I'd like to be able to compensate my construction crew. I almost had a guy cut his thumb off during this, and thank God he didn't sue me. But he's fine, and he ended up being in the show. But we'd also just like to continue to build from what we've started, and help shape Main And I am open for any questions that you may have.
When you started this project, you came before us, and you submitted us a bunch of ideas on design, drawings, and all these things you really wanted to do. And I think that's great. I think putting on shows, I think you're good at that, and you want to do more next year, but I'm not sure that even pays the utility bills. My concern is, how are we going to get to the end, and when will we get to the end to where we can bring the building up to total code, ADA, building codes, and all that? I mean, we're stretched out on just those things. We don't, we're not even meeting ADA. Minimum code. Well, you've had a year, and you still haven't got there. What guarantee, and how are you going to get there?
I, well, I will do one thing, and I'm not going to offer you any guarantees. I would be a fool to do so. But I'll tell you why. As long as I keep putting something, the quality on the stage, and I get the people that I need to get in there to see how this is going to work, and how it can work as a business, and I build my audience, then it makes it a little easier.
How long do we have to do that?
I'm asking for next year, and then I may have to come and ask you for another year.
For, okay. Where are we at right now with that? I mean, if I was to ask you how much money you had in escrow account to do the building rig and that issue?
I would say about $3,000.
Okay. But you were talking, I think we were talking several million to get it done, weren't we?
Right. Right. But right now, we're opening ourselves up to being able to get grants for things, being able to go to investors and talk to them, but they had to see it. They have to see it, and they have to see it on a consistent basis. They're businessmen, they're not heater people. You know, they have to see it.
We don't have to do anything on this, correct? Or it's just a present?
Or it's just a present, just kind of where he's at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the...
Kind of the follow-up.
We've come to the end of the year. We came to the end of the year in September, I believe, and I think that was at the point, maybe it was August, and the first production, The Odd Couple, was there. And Mark gave an update, is that correct?
Yeah.
And anyways, at some point, asked for the extension through the second production, so they'd have better information about trends, I guess, was the idea, trends in participation. So, that's where we're at. The theater proposals were, was that 2013 or 2012?
13.
12. We're at the conclusion of the second year.
It was December.
It was very end of, it was December of 2012.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's where we're at. There isn't an obligation to take action on it. It isn't a business item. What is left unresolved, though, is whether or not the commission wants to grant an extension to the proposal, I guess. The condition of the original proposal was a period of time, I can't remember if it was a year, a few months, for the Mark's proposal to, at that time, the intent was to show progress towards the capital campaign necessary to do the type of renovation that Mark was talking about. If the will of the commission is to continue down that experiment for another period of time, it would be helpful at some point if the commission took an affirmative action on that. If the experiment is changing into something else, then the commission's decision would be, do we hitch our wagon to a different idea of Mark's, or do we reopen it back up to proposals? Or do we do something else altogether? And those are kind of your decision. Your decision tree is define an extension for Mark's benefit and for yours. Doesn't preclude you from making or not making another extension down the road. Or saying, you know, we've granted an extension once already, let's retool. Are we gonna do something different and take away the expectation that there's gonna be X million dollars raised in a capital campaign? Or are we gonna say, no, it's time to let another proposal try, or go out and re-request proposals to see what other interests might be out there? Or to do something altogether different with the building, and do it under your own authority and on your own capital improvement schedule?
Well, I can present it to you this way. I don't know how much the building is costing you. Is the building costing you anything? I know you guys are picking up our utilities during the run of the production, but if it's not costing you anything, it's basically my time and my effort looking for money not coming from you. I'm not looking for city money. I'm trying to get out and get the donors, and get the investors, and bring them in. I've had to do a lot of things differently. And this is why, like I said, when I talk to the people that we all know I need to talk to, they didn't see it. Because if I was talking about oil, if I was talking about farming, if I was, you know, talking about beef in the detail that I can talk about this, they'd wrote me a check. They don't understand what I'm saying. So, I have to show them. I have to show them.
Well, I agree with what you're saying, but you're not giving, you can't give up your liabilities, and you have some liabilities in safety. And because of the building not meeting the codes and the ADA, you're basically saying that you're not gonna be responsible for that, because the building is not out there. So, that puts a liability on us, plus the fact that we're paying the utilities on the building. So, you got it made doing what you like to do.
Well, you know what? I'm not getting paid for this. I got a regular job.
Sure. I understand. Well, I know we granted an extension because you came to us earlier, because you were having, you were ramping up your efforts to try to raise funds for this. So, we gave you the extension.
Right.
Your first comment said you weren't out raising funds for this, which kind of raised the concern for me, because it's like, the whole reason why we gave you the extension was to go out and try to, you know, emphasize the fact that you've got this possible investment opportunity for people to put an investment in for this theater. And that's why we kind of gave you the extension to kind of help you along, when you say you're not out there looking.
Well, I didn't mean that. I'm inviting the people that I need to come to come see the shows, so they see what it's gonna be. Like I said, the quality of the shows has nothing to do with quality of the building. You know, I mean, this is, I wanted to put some, show them what we can do, what the marketing effort was going to be, and build it from there.
But the, okay.
I mean...
We'll just, I think we'll just go from here. Well, yes, we'll take it under advisement. Well, thank you for the update on it. I think, do we need to kind of get another update? Like, at the end of the, is it at the end of the year? Is that what we're looking at?
This was the date identified at the last update. The commission selected this meeting at the last time Mark gave an update, so.
Okay.
That's the extent of it. So, we could pick another date out. If we were to pick another date marked for an update, what would be an appropriate date? I mean, is there some other milestone in your efforts?
No, I wanted to start putting together next year, from January through...
So, your date is like more like picking another year, rather than another like two or three months out? There's no milestone between, I understand, you say 2020?
Yeah, see, I wanted to do a full season to show them that, you know, we're here, the lights are on, and let's start developing the audience that we need. So, I mean, and, you know, getting the sponsorships and things like that, and then...
Well, I understand developing an audience, but there's also the aspect of developing revenue to, or building the cause to... What your proposal was, was to purchase the state theater and turn it into this, the...
Right.
The dinner theater.
Well, no, no.
Or not the dinner theater.
No dinner theater.
The theater, no, that's what I'm trying to look for. Thank you. Concept.
And as we went, as I went and talked to the people that I needed to talk to, again, they're saying they love the idea, but they don't see it. So, that's why I had to change tact and say, "Okay, I need to start showing them what the business is gonna be before they come in and say, you know, 'Okay, we'll do this.'" You know, because we're asking for a monumental amount of money, and I'm not asking it from one person. I'd like to ask 50 people, and I'd love to ask 100 people. So, right now, this is, I'm sorry to say, but right now, we're on the ground floor. I had to change tact, and we're not even near harvest yet.
Okay.
I think an appropriate business item then would be at the next meeting to have the commission consider an extension of the proposal for an additional, through 2015, right? I mean, you want to be able to do a full calendar year, is what you're asking. So, I think we can put on the next agenda business item that has that specific request.
Okay.
And Mark, can you make it back two weeks from today?
Two weeks from today, I'll be here.
Is that right? Is it a three-week?
November 4th.
November 4th.
I will be here. Thank you all very much. Well, I see you next weekend.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I gotta get you guys behind me.
I can't commit to that.
I gotta get, so...
All right. Next.
Yeah. Item 10B, the governing bodies asked to consider and approve a sales tax expenditure agreement with Finney County identifying the use of excess sales tax generated from the expired sales tax for the law enforcement center. Randy, would you mind giving an update on this matter?
The county had this agreement for a few weeks, and had a call from their attorney last week indicating that they would like some language, which is reflected in paragraph 8, which just indicates if there's money left over after the projects have been completed, or if there's something that comes up, then the two parties will meet and determine whether money should be spent on the unanticipated expense that arose after this agreement was entered into and exhibit 1 or A was prepared. I drafted the language, sent it over to county's county counselor, and he informed me today that he and Mr. Pardington have not discussed it. But I have to believe, since they requested it and I drafted it, that it's going to be okay. So, I would request you approve the agreement, understanding that there may be a couple of minor changes to paragraph 8 if they get back with me, but it won't materially change the agreement.
And that was, it would just change how?
Maybe there's a couple words that they'd like.
All right. Any questions, or entertain a motion to approve the agreement?
I'm going to approve the sales tax expenditure agreement with Finney County.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Dale, second. Any other discussion on that item, or motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. Thank you. What's going on?
I am.
To the agenda?
She just stepped out.
Well, you can, Blenna can go then.
Yeah. You can do that next.
You wanna flip-flop?
Yeah, that's fine.
Item 11B then, is an update from the Economic Development Corporation, and I would invite our development corporation representatives and their director, or whoever. Our representative, Ray Purdy.
You're up.
Okay. I am one of two of the city representatives on Finney County Economic Development Corporation. Kathy McKinley is the other, and was planning on being here again today, but something came up to the last minute. I think all you have been given a report, and I've asked Lonnie to actually come up and go into more detail on the report and so forth. But again, we appreciate the working relationship that we have. It's been tremendous, and I hope that you feel the same way on the other side with our working relationship with our lovely lady.
Sure. Lonnie?
I think, thank you. Get that to me.
So, he was kind of the opening?
Apparently. I travel with an opening act now. I like that. I'm gonna vote for that from now on. It puts pressure on Walker, because he doesn't do nearly that well at the county convention.
Yeah, there you go.
You do have a copy of the report, and I apologize, I didn't get that sent to you, so you had to have an update to your agenda, but I do apologize for not getting it to you quicker. Just to quickly go through a few things, some of the things that we've done over the, throughout the third quarter, we had our Finney County job fair, which one would expect there weren't a whole lot of folks there looking for jobs, because as it turns out, we're pretty well-employed in this county. But that does continue to be a focus of ours. We also, through the Finney County Workforce Connection, hosted a job fair at the community college and one at the high school, and those were very well-attended. We had kind of captive audiences, especially at the high school, they don't have any choice but to go. We kind of liked that. But it really did work out well. We got to share some good information with students. And I think the sooner we can interact with them, the earlier in the education practice that we can become involved, the better our chances of either getting them through school completely and getting them through school with some idea of what they might like to pursue when they're finished with that. Certainly, if we can get them taking technical programs and coming into our workforce, that's gonna be beneficial for all of us along the way. So, we'll continue to work through that direction as well. Project updates I'd like to draw your attention to, Prospect 913, will be back in the community November 5th, 6th, and 7th. We're hosting some high-level meetings with them and some raw product procurement folks, as well as some end-users for their product and utilities. So, we'll continue to work with them, and we'll update you. We're very hopeful that we can move them forward. As you know, the prospect number indicates that we began meeting with them, the first time they traveled to the United States was in September of 13. So, we feel confident that we're moving forward to get them back in the community a year later. So, we'll keep you posted on that one. Prospect 414, this prospect actually visited Garden City last week. We had meetings with them, we had all of our utility providers, city engineer, city planning and zoning and so forth in the room, and the meeting went extraordinarily well. We feel very confident about our chances on that. We are still in a competitive process, and we'll submit our final prospectus to them this week. And as they say, it'll be in the hands of the economic development gods at that point, but we've certainly done our best as a community. And to echo what Ray said, the working relationship that we have with the city and the city staff is absolutely priceless for us. So, we appreciate that more than we can say. Senior Living, we do have a couple of updates on that. As you know, one of the developers has purchased property on Campus Avenue, and we continue to work with them to get through their engineering and get things worked out there. They do anticipate that they'll start construction right away in 2015, so we're hopeful that we actually get them open, perhaps at the end of 15, if not at the beginning of 16. And we do continue to work with a couple of other developers who still have an interest in the community based on what our senior living study indicated we could utilize in the community. The Holcomb project is moving along nicely. We actually have, their engineers are coming to town. We do have the first parcel under contract, and it's a rather large portion of it. So, their engineer will be in town tomorrow to meet with the Holcomb city engineer and get some things proceeding there. I think that's gonna be a nice project. Certainly, it's a good project for Holcomb, but I think it's good for our entire community as it creates another gateway opportunity for us coming in from the west. So, that'll be good for us. Existing businesses, we continue to work, obviously, with all of our existing businesses in any capacity that we can. Right now, we're finding workforce seems to be the biggest concerns that folks have, and we're working aggressively to try to meet those needs. Quite honestly, we are, we have to get into growth mode, that's all there is to it. We just need more people to see the value of Finney County and Garden City and choose to make their homes here. So, that's what we're focusing on. That's been our focus for 2014. We really do believe that the quality of life improvements that we've seen over the past couple of years, as well as our addressing the housing issue, is gonna help us to continue to see more folks find the value of our community and choose to live here. So, it's, from our standpoint, we're actually focusing on recruitment out of state for our positions, because quite honestly, it doesn't do us a lot of good to go pick employees off from 100 miles away and just damage those economies. So, it's in our best interest to draw them from outside of the region and make them a part of our community, and we'll continue to do that. Workforce Connection, Finney County Workforce Connection has really developed and is going quite well. And again, we're fortunate to have the city working with us on that. Michelle is one of our committee members there, and she brings a lot of expertise from the SHRM side, as well as just human resource management from the city side. So, we really appreciate that. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the commissioners? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye, Ray.
Thanks a lot, guys. How are we?
Yeah.
Nicole. This is item 10A, and this is an update from Downtown Vision.
I leave for 30 seconds. We'll see you later.
That's okay.
It's okay. I didn't want you to hear me.
No, we do. We just move the meeting along, so. You can't win for losing.
Are you a nuisance?
What's the official definition of a nuisance? Okay, moving along.
How's Downtown Vision, good?
It's great. We are coming off of Fall Fest, which once again was a good event. We had great weather this year. Attendance was, as usual, awesome. We never have bad attendance. This year, we increased the number of vendors, so that allowed us to expand the entire event and other blocks. We went from Fulton to Spruce this year, which I think made the majority of our downtown merchants happy. We, as always, appreciate the city's help in helping us make sure that that event goes off without a hitch. I know for a lot of those guys, 4:00 in the morning is a little bit much, but we appreciate it. As far as business growth, we have one new business in the downtown district. As far as business growth, we have one new business in the downtown district. It is called April Harmon Photography. She's located on the second floor of the Warren Building, and she's been there less than a month. So, also, as Lana mentioned on the business growth side of things too, we are actively working with the Finney County Workforce Connection, which is entities from the city, the county, FCED, CHAMER, College, and other various community entities are working together on the workforce issue in Finney County. As far as our committee reports go, promotions, like I said, just finished up with Fall Fest, so their next agenda item is Christmas, if you can believe that. They have decided on a theme this year, and it is Christmas Around the World, which I feel is very fitting for Garden City. They are also looking about doing some events that will involve the retailers this year to try to increase the foot traffic and hopefully pull up the shulham costume crowd that we'll have in town for shopping. They will be meeting next week with the retailers on Tuesday to kind of go through some of those ideas with them. On November 15th, the retailers will be doing their holiday open houses downtown, which is also will be the kickoff for their Shop Small Saturday event, which they've decided to do every, every Saturday here on out, and it will be the third Saturday of every month, and they will have a special event they will offer that day. They tried to do some things, obviously, with Thursdays that didn't go as we had planned. So they're going to try Saturdays during normal business hours. They're kind of pulling up an event that was created in 2010 by American Express, and so they're just going to kind of try to move forward with that, see if they can get that going. And they have also, the committee created some downtown wayfinding maps that kind of lets you know all the types of different shops that are available downtown. We tested these out at Fall Fest on our vendors and had pretty good response, so we are currently working with Petersons to get mass quantities of those printed up, and will have us distribute it out hopefully before Christmas. Our Economic Restructuring Committee, they are working on updating the investor and developer information for the downtown districts, and their goal is to hopefully be able to utilize our website for that information so it'll be readily available at all times for anyone who's looking for it. As far as design, they are working on banner art. In August, we had our banner art preview, and due to our space constraints now with our new office, we decided to move it out to Southland. The event actually went very well. We had good response from it, and we will plan on doing the preview event again next year out at Southland. This year, we have 28 artists and 54 banners. The auction is next Saturday, November 1st, 7:00 PM. Tickets can be purchased by calling the office, or we, this year, have it available there online at GCdowntown.com. The design group, also, and you guys have a memo, I believe, that Seeland handed out to you. This summer, early fall, the design committee conducted a series of master plan meetings. They just wanted to kind of prioritize some of the projects in the master plan for the CIP process, which obviously starts with the project. And so that was, that memo was basically the efforts of those meetings. We, guys, as always, we appreciate your guys' continued support, and if you have any questions, feel free.
Anything major in the memo? I mean, that you want to highlight, or just?
I think, obviously, the big project is the Heroes Way project. I think that they would like to see, hear Mark to move forward. Obviously, you guys already did number one, so that's a big check off the list.
Okay.
But yeah, their main thing was the Heroes Way project. They would like to see something move forward with that.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Nicole? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job on the fall events, to you and your board and your volunteers. Item, yeah, 11C, I think we're up to the consent agenda. There are no changes to the consent agenda. So if approved, it would be number 11C, item 11C1 through 6E. And if any of those items you'd like removed, we can talk about them separately.
No, none? Okay, make a motion that we approve item 11C1 through 6E. Is there a second?
House second.
Commissioner Dale's second, and is there any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. All right.
There's no other business commissioner? I think we're ready for commissioner reports.
Commissioner Dale?
Okay, I'd like to again thank Joe Campos for his award and safety award. I've been out to the Electoral Building a couple times, and I was, trucks drive in there and offload and load, and I'll tell you what, he does a great job. He really takes a lot of pride in what he's doing, you can see that in the photos, so he's a good valuable asset to the, to the city, and I'm glad he's there, and I'm glad he got that award, so make sure that he knows that, Mike. Lana DeGlo, I want to thank her for, for what her and her economic development does in the, in the community, and wish them well and, and hope that they are able to keep these people that got bind up and maybe can get them into our city, and it'll certainly help. And Nicole, her job of taking care of downtown and the Oktoberfest was, was a great event, so she did well there. And I'd like to make one simple comment about the security at the court. You know, the price of, price of freedom is not cheap, and it doesn't come without some, a little bit of inconvenience. And I think anytime that we as a governing body and Matt as a city manager feel that there's a need to have security provided for our judge, our, our city attorney, and all the people that are over there, not all of them are there, and the happiest people in the world, but if, if that security can keep those people safe and, and not only protect them from possible injury, I'm glad that we're doing what we have to do, and I'm sure that as Matt and, and the city attorney and the judge review this thing from time to time, they'll probably see, make changes and make it better, or even make it softer to be through. But I'm glad that we're taking that security needed to protect us.
That's all. I'd like to thank Commissioner Dale. Commissioner Dale?
I too. To me, safety of our, of our employees is paramount, and I feel that it was the right thing to do, and why we have that in place and agree that it may inconvenience some, but the safety of everyone there is more important. I'd like to congratulate Joe Campos for his safety award, and, and that's about it.
Okay. Commissioner thinks there's absence, so Commissioner Long?
Just to congratulate Joe Campos on his award and thank him for all his hard work, and thanks to Downtown Vision, Economic Development, and CVB, and all the other great organizations we have in town doing great work, and Mark Pamplin, you know, making progress there at the state, and look forward to, you know, a discussion there to see what the best move is there, and I won't, you know, I'll be asking the question, is there somebody out there that would like another chance at it? And I think that's what we'll all be talking about, but, you know, he's shown some progress and, and he's certainly committed and passionate about it, and so that's good. Glad to see that, that something's going on there, and even though there's some concerns with the building, and I, you know, I understand that, but at the same time, it'd be worse if it was just sitting and deteriorating without any use, I think. So getting something out of it's a positive at this point in time, so. But there may be somebody else that has a new and better idea, we'll have to see, but so that's all I have, just lots of good things going on.
I'd just like to echo all the comments of the other commissioners, you know, Joe Campos on his award. You know, we've got an outstanding staff of employees that do a great job every day to make Garden City the best place to live, work, and raise a family, so congratulations. Good job on the pre-meeting, where we're at on our goals. That really shows that, you know, city staff's working to make Garden City, you know, the best place possible to, again, work with, raise a family. Some of us attended the leadership, or League of Kansas Municipalities meetings in Wichita, brought back a lot of good information, and just showed us, the commissioners that did attend, that Garden City was doing a lot of good things, but there's some things that we just need to work on as well, so. But good conference to attend, recommend it for the other commissioners that have not attended to, you know, if they're still on the commission to possibly attend it next year. And on that, that's all I have. And anybody else? Okay, I call it, meeting adjourned.